It's seven o'clock, January the eighth, twenty twenty five. I'm calling the meeting to order. At this time, let me lead the Pledge of Allegiance. Everybody, please rise.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of America and to the republic for which it stands, a nation under God, indivisible, every day and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. Well, welcome. And I hope you had a wonderful Christmas holiday celebration. Happy New Year to those who are online. Mister Randy Baez, Happy New Year to us, to you. And we have our, who's helping us now, our recording secretary. Jessica. Yes, thank you for helping us tonight. And if you could do the roll call, please.
Commissioner Kong.
Here.
Commissioner Hawkins.
Here.
Commissioner Gupta.
Here.
Commissioner Awasi.
Yes, here.
Commissioner Galang.
Present.
Vice Chair Medina Ashby.
Present.
Chair Albana.
You are very loud.
Chair Albana.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Jessica. Our next item would be from Attorney Creach to give us the Declaration of Conflict of Interest.
Thank you, Chair. I ask the Chair and every member of the Commission whether he or she has any financial or personal conflict of interest related to any of the items on tonight's agenda.
Commissioner Kong.
None.
Commissioner Hawkins.
None.
Commissioner Gupta.
None.
Commissioner Awasi.
None.
Commissioner Galang.
None.
Vice Chair Medina Ashby.
None.
Chair Albana. Thank you.
Thank you. I further ask the Chair and every other member of the Commission to please disclose any campaign contributions of one hundred dollars or more received within the last twelve months from any of the parties entering into contracts with the city on tonight's agenda, or contributions received from any development project applicant for development projects on tonight's agenda.
Commissioner Kong.
None.
Commissioner Hawkins.
None.
Commissioner Gupta.
None.
Commissioner Awasi.
None.
Commissioner Galang. Vice Chair Medina Ashby.
None.
Chair Albana.
None.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. Let the record reflect no reported conflicts.
Thank you, Attorney Creach. Thank you, Jessica. Our next agenda item would be the approval of our agenda for tonight. As we have reviewed it, do I get a motion to approve the agenda for tonight?
I make a motion to approve the agenda for tonight.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner. Who did it? Awasi.
This one. Yeah, I'll second it.
Second by Commissioner Hawkins. Thank you. And.
Commissioner Kong.
Aye.
Commissioner Hawkins.
Aye.
Commissioner Gupta.
Aye.
Commissioner Awasi.
Aye.
Aye.
Commissioner Galang.
Aye.
Vice Chair Medina Ashby.
Aye.
Chair Albana.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now, we have two minutes of the past meetings. It will be the October the ninth and November thirteenth. For the October the ninth, may I have a motion to approve the minutes of that meeting? A motion?
I'll make the motion to approve the minutes.
Thank you. Commissioner Kong, second by?
I'll look second.
Commissioner Hawkins. Thank you. Let's have a vote.
Commissioner Kong.
Aye.
Commissioner Hawkins.
Aye.
Commissioner Gupta.
Aye.
Commissioner Awasi.
Aye.
Commissioner Galang.
Aye.
Vice Chair Medina Ashby.
Aye.
Chair Albana.
And I'm an aye.
Thank you.
And now for the next approval for the past minutes of November the thirteenth, twenty twenty four. Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion to approve the minutes of November the thirteenth.
Thank you. Commissioner Kong, seconded by?
I second.
By Commissioner Gupta. Thank you. Let's have a vote.
Commissioner Kong.
Aye.
Commissioner Hawkins.
Aye.
Commissioner Gupta.
Aye.
Commissioner Awasi.
Aye.
Commissioner Galang.
Aye.
Vice Chair Medina Ashby.
Aye.
Chair Albana.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jessica. Our next item in our agenda is announcements. Any announcements, planning commissioners? Planning Director.
I do have two announcements. The first is, we will be hosting, the city and the planning department will be hosting a community meeting for the comprehensive zoning ordinance update, which we brought before this commission a while back for a study session. The public draft was recently released, so the draft zoning ordinance, the entire zoning ordinance is available for the public's review. So we are hosting a meeting tomorrow in the Milpitas Community Center, in the auditorium. This will be a hybrid meeting, so there is also a Zoom link. So I would just like to encourage anybody who may be listening online to register, which would help us keep track of who will attend and prepare accordingly. So this will be a great opportunity for the community to provide feedback on this important project. The second announcement that I have is, staff is working on the Gateway Main Street specific plan, which is an update to the Midtown specific plan. This area is centered around Main Street and closer to Calaveras. That, a public draft of that plan will be available soon as well. So just want to give everybody a heads up. So those interested can be ready to review and provide comment, which is what we really, as city staff, want to, want to see. So we can make sure that these efforts achieve the vision of the community. That is all. Thank you.
Thank you, Planning Director Jay. I wish the community would be listening and watching our recording because it is very important, really, that we come together and contribute our views and whatever is good to improve our city. Thank you for that. Any other announcements, Commissioner? Maybe your birth dates? Parties, parties, no dates. All right. Our next agenda item would be public forum. I'm going to open it now for the public forum, but since no one is here. Is there anyone online? No?
We're not taking online public comments, but you can ask if we have any speaker cards.
Okay.
There are no speaker cards.
Thank you, Jessica. So do I have to take a motion to close the public forum?
You do not.
I don't have. Correct. All right. So now our next agenda item, number nine, is our public hearing, which there's also no other items. Let's go now to number ten, new business. And we have ten one, our planning commissioner approval meeting schedule. Did you see that, that in our handouts for twenty twenty five? We have twenty one meetings for twenty twenty five. No meetings in July. It's our break. Yes, Planning Director?
I was just going to say, this schedule is for twenty twenty five, as you mentioned, and these are our regularly scheduled meetings, second and fourth Wednesday of each month. So it's pretty straightforward. So we just want to bring this item to formally approve the schedule.
And this is also on the website, right?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Do we have to approve it?
Yes, by motion.
By motion. Do I get a motion to approve this schedule?
I'll make a motion to approve the planning commission's schedule.
Thank you, Commissioner Hawkins. Second by?
I second that.
Commissioner Awasi. Yes, thank you. Vote, please.
Commissioner Kong.
Aye.
Commissioner Hawkins.
Aye.
Commissioner Gupta.
Aye.
Commissioner Awasi. Commissioner Galang.
Aye.
Vice Chair Medina Ashby.
Aye.
Chair Albana.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jessica. Our next agenda item, ten two, citywide ABC licenses presentation. And we have our project planner, Mister Randy Baez. Thank you. Good evening. Thank you for being with us. Go ahead.
Oh, if I may, could I just give a quick introduction? Because, as you can see, the planning commission passed a motion requesting that staff at a future meeting provide some additional analysis. This was all facilitated or started by a development review application or a conditional use permit for an alcohol beverage and control license for off-site sales at a gas station. And it raised some other questions and some concerns. So it was a while ago, so we really appreciate everybody's patience. We have been understaffed, so it was something that took a little bit of time for us to get to, but we have our associate planner here, Randy Baez, who did a lot of wonderful research. And we thought this would be a great time to bring this item up, as we don't have a development review application for today. So yeah, Randy will go through everything that we've researched and prepared. So take it away, Mister Baez.
Thank you, Director Lee, and good evening, everyone. Happy New Years again. If you could pull up the presentation, thank you. You can go to the next slide. Yes, as Director Lee mentioned, on February twenty eighth of last year, the planning commission passed a motion requesting that staff at a future meeting provide additional information regarding gas stations that sell alcohol and to facilitate a discussion regarding potential updated guidelines and/or regulations for alcohol-related entitlements, particularly near sensitive places such as schools and daycares. Staff compiled internal city and state databases to update the planning commission on this information and have prepared a staff report summarizing the existing conditions and framework, alternative procedures from nearby jurisdictions, and potential recommendations as well. Next slide, please. Currently, in all zones in the city, alcoholic beverage sales are either entirely prohibited or require a CUP issued by the planning commission. Accessory alcohol sales associated with restaurants are regulated differently. These uses can be either prohibited, require a CUP, a minor CUP, depending on the zone. For some ground-floor restaurants in certain areas or mixed-use streets, beer and wine sales may be permitted by right, as long as there is no separate bar area. Next slide, please. In addition to the city's zoning regulations, we also regulate new alcohol uses in conjunction with the license system administered by the state Alcoholic Beverage Control, or ABC. The primary state legislation that establishes these limits is AB twenty eight ninety seven, which prohibits the issuance of alcohol alcohol beverage licenses in areas of undue concentration unless there is a determination of public convenience or necessity. Areas of undue concentration can be found based on either the allowable number of off-sale licenses, ABC allows per census tract, or above-average crime. For example, if a certain census tract allowed for five licenses based on population, but there were currently seven active licenses, any additional licenses would have to meet the findings for public convenience or necessity. Next slide, please. Some jurisdictions have set local requirements for undue concentration under AB twenty eight ninety seven, but the city of Milpitas uses the CUP process to determine if the proposed use would serve the public convenience or necessity. This includes meeting the conditional use permit findings within the municipal code, which include the proposed use. At the proposed location will not be detrimental or injurious to property or improvements in the vicinity, nor to the public health, safety, and general welfare. The proposed use is consistent with the general plan and the proposed use is consistent with the city's zoning ordinance. And when reviewing CUPs for alcohol sales, staff reviews the type of license being requested along with the proposed businesses and uses that information to determine if a finding of public convenience or necessity can be met. Although the state has nearly ninety ABC license types, sorry, could you go back to the previous slide? Thank you. These are the most common. General refers to beer and wine with distilled spirits. So as you can see, type twenty and twenty-one would be associated with most retailers, while forty-one and forty-seven would be associated usually with restaurants, while type forty-eight license would be issued to either bars or taverns. Next slide, please. Staff also analyzes the alcohol requests for conformance with the general plan, including these policies, two point eight dash I dash three and seven. Next slide, please. There are currently eighteen gas stations within the city. Of the eighteen gas stations, three are currently licensed to sell alcoholic beverages through ABC license type twenty, which is beer and wine. An additional gas station was recently entitled. That was the previous entitlement that we approved last year for a type twenty as well, which would bring the total to four licenses within the city. And this figure shows a map of the city and those gas stations. Next slide, please. The city of Milpitas Police Department works closely with other city departments and applicants in preparing proactive patrol tactics and security measures prior to the issuance of any alcohol permits. MPD typically evaluates the following circumstances and includes relevant conditions of approval, including a secure storage of alcohol to prevent theft, compliance with permits, which includes all city, county, and state permits, regulate sales hours, and requires individuals serving alcohol to be twenty-one years of age or older. Next slide, please. And as requested at last year's planning commission hearing, here is a slide prepared by the police department showing DUI arrests near gas stations, and this information is as of December twenty twenty four. Next slide, please. As part of this analysis, staff reviewed the operational and procedural requirements of nearby jurisdictions as well. Unlike the city of Milpitas, San Jose's zoning code expressly requires the submission of a CUP application. San Jose has separation requirements for off-site alcohol sales, but allows for exceptions as long as certain findings are met. In addition, if the proposed use is closer than five hundred feet from any similar use for off-sale, then the proposed location should not result in a total of more than four similar establishments within a one-thousand-foot radius. Then additional findings are required. If the proposed use is closer than five hundred feet from any childcare center, public park, social service agency, residential care or service facility, a school, or a hundred fifty feet from any residentially-zoned property, then it would be subject to additional requirements as well. Unlike the city of Milpitas, Campbell has separation requirements for off-site alcohol sales, but not onsite or ancillary alcohol sales, unless the subject property is located within an overlay or combining zoning district, subject to what subject to what they refer to as a master use permit. Campbell also specifies different required findings for onsite, off-site, and ancillary alcohol sales. With the exception of grocery stores, proposed off-site alcohol sales have a minimum three-hundred-foot separation requirement from sensitive receptors, including parks, playgrounds, and schools. Off-site alcohol sales also have a minimum five-hundred-foot separation requirement from similar retailers and payday lenders. Although Cupertino does not have any separation requirements, they are the one nearby jurisdiction we were able to find that has special operational conditions required for any new ABC licenses for new or proposed gas stations. And these include no beer and wine displayed within five feet of the cash register, no advertisement of alcohol beverages displayed at the motor fuel islands, no alcohol sales made from a drive-in window, no display or sale of beer and wine made from an ice tub, no beer or wine advertising shall be located on the fuel islands, and that employees on duty between ten PM and two AM who sell beer and wine have to be twenty-one years of age or older. Based on the review of alcohol-related requirements from nearby jurisdictions, staff will implement the following procedural and policy measures to strengthen the city's regulation of alcohol sales, including routing applications to potential sensitive uses and updating our conditions of approval. Staff will route alcohol requests to schools, places of assembly, daycares, and any other sensitive uses the planning director deems necessary. These notices will be mailed for uses within a one-thousand-foot radius of the project site, which would be consistent with the noticing requirements for our conditional use permit. Conditions of approval will also be updated to include limits on sales and advertisements of alcoholic beverages and require ID readers. If the planning commission desires further regulation of alcohol sales beyond these procedural and policy updates, the commission may consider the following measures, which may first require council prioritization of an amendment to the zoning ordinance before staff can initiate any work. These could include enhancing findings for public convenience and necessity, as well as enacting separation requirements, although staff does not recommend that. If any proposal would require more than four hours of staff work, the planning commission may recommend a proposed zoning ordinance amendment to the city council for prioritization through a majority vote. If the city council prioritizes the item, staff would then undertake effort to develop an ordinance before bringing it to planning commission and then the city council for approval. However, the commission may also direct staff to enhance these public convenience findings as part of a policy change. Next slide, please. In closing, staff recommends the planning commission receive staff's presentation and this report and discuss the procedural and policy updates, as well as any anticipated zoning ordinance update recommendations. I'm available for any questions, as well as Lieutenant Speckenhauer from the police department. Thank you.
Thank you, Mister Baez. Any of the commissioners have any questions? Yes, Commissioner Kong, go ahead.
Thank you. Thank you, Randy, for the presentation. I really appreciate you pulling this together. I do have a question, either for the lieutenant who's online, or you could answer that. Can we go back to slide number ten? Is that's the DUI arrest report from the police department? I'm not sure.
Jessica, could you go to slide ten?
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, so this chart is actually very useful. I mean, in future, when we have new applicants who wants you know, ABC license in an area that has high risk for crime. I mean, because I think based on the state law area with undue concentration of crime, I think that would be something of this chart, if they can be made available to the planning commission for new applicants, I think it will really help us in making the decision whether additional licenses would be warranted as far as meeting either the convenience or the necessity portion, because I personally would, you know, I'd see, seeing this chart, having it color-coded so nicely with the information of like top three, above average, and so on, guides the decision-making to make sure that we are going to make responsible recommendation. And so the question is going back to Randy and to the lieutenant, is can this chart be maintained such that every time we have a new application, an up-to-date chart will be made available to the commissioners?
Sure. Lieutenant, are you available to answer that question?
Can you guys hear me okay?
Yes.
I imagine that is something that we can definitely do. I know, looking at this chart right now, it's showing essentially just the gas stations that we have. But I don't, if the concern is over whether or not that chart can be maintained, I don't see why it couldn't be upon request. I don't think it's something that we're going to be like filling out every month, but if it was a permit or something, a question is asked like, hey, can we get an updated amount for the last year? That's something we could like that.
Yeah, I mean, that would be my personal request is, as part of the procedure that is being recommended for new applicants, this would be a piece of information that I would like to see be refreshed for the new application.
Okay, sure. Thank you, Commissioner Kong. And sorry, just to clarify, would that be for all onsite and offsite applications? Or just offsite? applications or just off-site?
Um, probably off-site just because um I think you have a different procedure for onsite or consumption, right? So this is my concern will be more for off-site consumption.
Okay, thank you.
The drinking and the driving. Thank you.
I don't know if it's if it's needed for me to kind of explain maybe some of the statistics a little as well, if that would be something would be appreciated or not.
Um, yeah, I think that would be appreciated.
So the arrests, the percentages that you're showing, so you have the top three, the yellow, which is above average, and green being below average. Uh, these can stem anywhere from a car stop or a um accident that happens in the area. These areas are major thoroughfares. So uh pretty much you have the Calaveras corridor, you have the Dixon uh Dixon Road corridor, as well as of Roff of Landis and Montague area. So those areas are major thoroughfares. So whether it's an enforcement action or an accident that was taken in the area that resulted in a DUI arrest. So there could be multiple factors in terms of why we're getting statistics there. Uh, so I don't know if it's an exact indication regarding the businesses or those local uh actual gas stations as the reasons for. Uh, but it's just more or less that those, their arrests made in the area of thoroughfares that are related to or close to uh the gas stations, just for, just for clarification. So like, I know there's always a little bit of more, you know, truth or information behind statistics.
Planning Director has something to say?
Clear, the sound was not clear. Is there something to do with the system or?
Audio was a bit.
I couldn't fully understand each word that was said. Maybe the sound is not coming through?
Well, yeah, it was a little gurgled. I didn't, I didn't clearly understand.
Would you like me to repeat?
Yes, please.
Of course. Um, so so looking at the statistics of the gas stations that you see there, they're located on major thoroughfares, which are major locations where you have a lot of traffic that drives through that area. So Calaveras corridor, Dixon Road, as well as Landis and Montague expressways. So a lot of the DUI arrests can stem from either a traffic enforcement stop or could stem from an accident that occurred within close proximity to those locations. So to determine whether or not the actual result of the alcohol or DUI is stemming from that business, it it could just be because they're also in the area of those locations where the stops or the accidents were uh occurred.
Okay, thank you. Um, my next question was, that was kind of answered to my question. So it's not that these people were drinking at the gas stations and got arrested near there. It was just they happened to be stopped near a gas station.
I believe so, yes.
Okay, great. Thank you.
If I may make a brief comment and also a clarification question as well. Actually, maybe I'll start with the clarification. Um, so I I think another, I I think the clarification of onsite versus offsite, that was helpful, but also um for like a future application, do we want to know the crime statistics within the area of that entitlement, or do we still want an updated um data for the whole city?
I personally feel with close to that track of where it's being located is going to be most important, but um having the guidance of what is average in Malpitas would be good to know, right? If it's above, but just like um whether it's a top three or it's above average amount of DUI arrests in that track would be very beneficial.
Um, and if if I may ask a clarifying question as well. So the um the current map that you have tonight, um it shows all gas stations in Malpitas and then vicinity of them. Um, obviously, as um uh as Randy pointed out, only four of those gas stations actually sell alcohol. Um, so the part of the question that I have is even if we had a a radius and we were looking at um similar uses to whatever the uh undue concentration application that was under review was, um, there could be situations where the number of results in that area would be significantly higher. Um, so for instance, if you had restaurants in an area that had a number of restaurants, um, you may have a a very large number of hits, even if you were just looking at a single census tract. So I guess that's one question for clarification of the kinds of information um that the commission would find beneficial and helpful versus the kinds of information that um may overwhelm the uh uh intellectual process.
Yeah, I kind of agree too. It, I don't know if they keep on the police reports the information basically about how somebody got drunk or where they got drunk, you know, that led up to this, because if they just were at somebody's house and had an accident near a gas station, it's not the gas station's fault, right? So, yeah. Yeah. It makes, yeah, definitely makes it challenging. I don't know if the police keep those kind of statistics or, you know, not that people are going to be honest about where and how they, that happened, but.
So the actual when we do our, when you do an investigation regarding a DUI, whether it's an accident or a car traffic stop, the, there is a questioning process where we'll try and talk with the the person who's been detained and say, hey, you know, you know, how many drinks have you had? Where did you drink? When was your last, when was the last drink that you had? So trying to get an idea of um kind of that evening precipitating up to the time they come into the contact with the officer. Um, a lot of the times, though, the, sometimes people will be willing to talk and kind of share, you know, what they've been doing, and other times people just don't say a thing at all. So the amount of data that we can collect to kind of maybe track back to that, it's based within the actual report, but it's hit and miss in terms of what people are willing to share sometimes, because they do have the right to not talk.
Uh, Commissioner, Commissioner Galen.
Randy, can you show me the um slide number, number ten? Um. It is a number DUI. Can you, number ten? Can you?
I'm sorry, Jessica, did you catch that? Okay, thank you.
It should be showing up anytime now?
Yeah, uh, Randy, during the um the DUI arrest, do you have any time and day? Um, have especially in the sharp shot, North Park Victoria, those are red. That, and like to know if this incident happens on Friday, Saturday evening or which?
So I would say I can maybe answer that question. I would say most of these stops are usually going to be in the evening hours. Uh, we have had situations where we've had early morning arrests related to a DUI, sometimes mid-afternoon. Um, but in terms of like the exact dates and times, uh, this obviously does not track that information or that data. Uh, that'd be something that would have to go back and look at on a more specific basis.
If you look at it here, um, on Shell and the seventy-six, fourteen, and twelve arrest, it is a lot.
So you're looking at uh number twelve, or sorry, number thirteen?
Number two, number two and number, number thirteen.
Number thirteen. So those two locations are pretty much across the street from each other. Uh, they're kitty-corner locations, one being on the North Park side, just north of Calaveras, and one being on the corner of Calaveras and South Park for uh the seventy-six gas station. So any, there might be some double calculation within that location, only because um there, if it's, we're looking at it based on the total DUIs are calculated within a quarter mile surrounding each other, then if it's captured in those areas, they are within this, like, a very close proximity to each other, so they could be double counted.
But if this uh year twenty twenty-five, it will increase the number of DUI arrests, what, what we should do?
If it goes up, is what you're asking?
Yes.
Uh, well, again, a lot of traffic enforcement is done and kind of can uh done through our officers, who kind of one of the areas we focus is in that area, because it's one of our major corridors. So um, we do traffic DUI enforcement multiple times, where it's doing specific targeted DUI enforcement multiple times through the year. Um, and it's usually during holidays and uh like major events. So we will do that, those types of enforcement, whether or not we, do we think there's a need for maybe more targeted specific in that area? I I wouldn't say that it's to the point where it's needed, because again, this could come any time of day. These statistics that we're looking at and plus some of these stats, I'm not sure exactly how they're calculated, but um they could have been calculated where it's you're actually double counting, because they're within each other.
Um, during Friday and Saturday night, maybe that's a very big, big day. Um, there's any police present on the area?
Oh, yes. There's always going to be police presence in those areas. I know um I am the lieutenant in charge of our swing shift, which comes from two to midnight, as well as from nine to seven AM, so I manage both those shifts. Um, and I can tell you for sure that our officers are definitely working those areas.
Thank you.
Um, planning, thank you, Commissioner Galen. A planning director has something to clarify, please.
Yes, um, so in other cities, I've seen um city staff like bringing up maybe just crime data for the census tract overall, not necessarily DUIs, because I think DUIs are kind of hard to tie to wherever the source was from, but I've seen in other situations where we, the city may look at like calls for service or you know, other types of crime, where having alcohol sales present in that area could exacerbate the issue. So I'm not sure this maybe also is a question for um PD, but you know, if maybe another way to look at it, rather than focusing exclusively on DUIs, is just the crime data for the census tract. I don't know if that's something that's feasible.
Yeah, that that's a, the the comment is, it's good for a statistics, right? And it's, and the PD would always have that, and the city is always copied on that. Uh, so for every for every, for every item that we approve, they will always provide us that, as the PD always sits with us, even the fire department. But we basically cannot say when, when uh lieutenant, whenever you cut somebody that's DUI, we don't know if they're coming from San Jose, just crossing our borders, right?
Correct.
Yeah. So it's not because of the sales that we have at in gas stations, but um your requirements for serving the liquor license and also uh distances, you know, and all of that is considered, um is well-considered and well, well-planned. Thank you, Randy.
So i- if I may, um, I I think that was a good suggestion, though, and a comment. So I think in future applications, um, we don't know exactly what data and how it will look, but I do think the point is to look at that some crimes, like crime data, and have that be part of the analysis. So we can definitely um focus on that, which is also just an internal um operational procedure. So that's something that we could easily implement. But we didn't outline it in in our options, so I do appreciate that being brought up. Um, and also, I'm also curious, yeah, on the thoughts of uh whether we feel like in addition to the operational improvements, like conditions of approval and routing, um if we feel like the buffers, the separation requirements, and also um the additional findings are necessary. I think what um Associate Planner Baez was saying is for the findings, um, you could have an amendment that goes into the code, so it's spelled out clearly in the code, or we can just make sure to discuss the same topics in the findings that we have currently. Um, so we can address it through both ways. One would require an ordinance, the other could be just done as an internal policy. Just want to bring that um those uh discussions back. Thank you.
And Randy, with this report that you made, uh, was this just done for the year twenty twenty-four, or you have it annually?
Um, yeah, thank you, uh, Char Albona. The crime statistics specifically for the gas station were for twenty twenty-four.
I see, which is good. At least we did it. Thank you so much. Yeah, we appreciate it for spending the time, because we requested it. It it's a good informa- information.
I have one question.
Sure, Kobi Shragupta.
So I'm, I'm wondering, uh, if I understand correctly, that what you're recommending to do is uh within a thousand feet, uh, if you have uh, you know, those sensitive areas, then it raise some flag and then you will process it in a special way. It seemed like we are being more stringent than rest of the cities, like, like Cupertino seemed to be, you know, the 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 most lenient, and some other cities have, like you mentioned, San Jose, I think was five hundred feet or something, and another city was probably a thousand feet. So why you pick up uh the thousand feet seems to be the most stringent. I mean, is there any particular reason why we should be more stringent than than most of the cities?
Yeah, thank you for that question. Uh, we decided on a thousand uh foot buffer mostly because that's the noticing buffer that we have already for conditional use permits. However, you are uh welcome to bring that up for discussion. We could uh decrease that buffer as well.
Also, I do want to um clarify that the one thousand feet is merely for when we would route or notify the the uses inside that radius. That's a little bit different than the other cities where they prohibit it within that radius. So I I wouldn't say we're necessarily being more strict because, just because they're within a thousand feet, it doesn't mean we would prohibit the use. It means that we would just notify a school, for example, and if they raise concerns, we can work with them to add conditions of approval that would address those concerns. So it's it's a little bit of a, it's an apples to oranges comparison. Um, we're not necessarily proposing a a buffer of a thousand feet. Yeah.
But do you have any number of feet for prohibition, actually? I mean, one is uh that you notify, that I understand, but what about if it's, let's say, less than five hundred feet, then will you will not even accept the application?
We've uh just looked at what other cities have done, which are mostly five hundred feet. Um, I would, we're asking the commission for your thoughts on whether we want to implement a similar type of separation requirement.
So you're not recommending anything in that respect?
No, we are not. But we just wanted to let the commission know that other, some cities have chosen to do that. Um, but it's a balance, I think, as you kind of alluded to. Uh, you know, we want to be careful and, you know, be regulate these uses, but at the same time encourage economic development. So um, yeah, we're trying to balance it, and we we also want to just hear from the commission on the, your thoughts.
I have a question. Uh, recently, on the corner of uh uh Calaveras and Park Victoria, uh, the gas station was approved for uh last year for alcohol license. Now, um, there is a school very close by, I think a thousand feet. We have another uh liquor, uh Ocean Market sells liquor. There's another liquor store there, uh, which is okay. Uh, and behind that is a motel which has a lot of problems. Then we have those Hillview residences, which has a lot of problems, and going into Dempsey, which is more than a thousand feet, of course, there is a liquor store. So uh we need some kind of regulation that when there is a school close by, and there are so many liquor stores, at least they should know, a lot of cities have implemented that when you give something like this to a gas station, if they should not be able to uh sell uh shots, like the airplane shots, the fifty ml or hundred ml, they should be able to sell only two hundred ml, and beer should be in container of six or twelve. No single uh can is allowed. So we could also implement something of that here as a safeguard, so that people just don't take a can and start drinking uh or a small can twelve ounce and just, you know, they start drinking there. So, and this should apply uh to even to the new licenses also for independent liquor stores. So this will be one of my suggestions.
Okay. Planning Director, please.
Yeah, I I think what I'm hearing, if I could just confirm, is maybe rather than an outright prohibition, if it is within X number of feet, we can think about ways to be a little more regulatory with the way it operates. Is that accurate?
Yes, yeah, yes, the way it operates. Let's say the new uh gas station, or even if we have have a liquor store cool or close by, if it was not a gas station, and it is close to a school, it is very easy, we we have seen people, uh, young kids, sometimes they'll give some person some money and tell them to get a can or two cans or a bottle forty ounce. So once they cannot sell those things, or individual bottles of a certain size, less than twenty-four ounce, so it becomes really difficult for them uh to pass it on to kids, or people just having the shooters and drinking in their cars, or just coming out of the store and drinking. That, so those regulations go a long way in maintaining the sanctity of the area and uh making sure that uh it does not land in uh young kids' hands, and also the drinking and driving, just grabbing a single can and drinking on the way. Some people know the consequences, but still they'll do it, but if it is not available, it's not available. So going forward, we can do it, so whosoever have been given the licenses can't do anything. They are kind of grandfather, but the new ones, we could have some strict uh rules as far as the new uh as 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 far as the problems are concerned, which we see day to day.
If I may? Yeah, what I find interesting about the conversation, I understand what you're saying. Looking at the DUI report, though, last year, when we were looking at allowing the smoke shop in, a lot of the conversation we had was about how people could go into the liquor store or the, the store close by there, get alcohol, and they were going around to the housing community behind there and partying, so to speak. But when I looked at the report that was showing earlier, there was only one DUI in that particular area. So before we start adding more, you know, prohibitions or anything like that, I think I would like to see statistics from the police department in any area that this might happen. Because again, I don't know of that much in the way of problems with kids going in, getting alcohol and drinking on the spot. And, you know, I think we, we seem to police ourselves as a community pretty well already. So before we implement those kind of rules, they are conditional use permits, right? So I think we can always look at those case by case, see what kind of statistics we can get from the police department, if we've got those concerns. And we can always, if we give it now, we can always revisit it if there's problems with that particular site. Personal opinion.
Thank you, Commissioner Calkins. Good point.
If I could just add to that, yes, I think what Commissioner Awastie is bringing up is a good point, but there are two ways to tackle it. One would be to codify it. The other way, I think, as Commissioner Calkins is suggesting, is to allow us to do it on a case-by-case basis by having conditions of approval, depending on the data that we see for each project, and applying it accordingly. So if we go that route, we can accomplish that, I think, but without having to do like an ordinance. Because I think if we were to, like, have it codified, it would tie our hands a bit more.
Yeah, I, thank you, Planning Director, because I'm also in favor of, you know, the second way, which is not to codify it and allow each applicant and the situation to be decided based on the data that's available to us at that point in time. And that's why having the crime statistics is going to be important. While it may not be very accurate, at least we feel like we would be able to analyze it and do due justice to the community that lives in that area to make sure that we don't add new sources that could exacerbate, you know, crime. So that is, information is important. I wanted to get clarification on the notification, because you mentioned that 1,000 feet is the default notice? And now we're just routing it in addition to what is already default? So what really changes is not really clear, because if they're already receiving the yellow cards, then how is this different?
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner Kang. So just for clarification, the 1,000-foot buffer for conditional use permits, that's a noticing buffer, so notices go to every single property within that 1,000-foot buffer. But if a use does not require a conditional use permit, but we still want to notify any sensitive uses, such as daycares, we would notify those individually, rather than every property within 1,000 feet.
Okay, so this is making sure that they get X, it will definitely get notification, but what is the format to get that, to the, I mean, is it still the yellow card? Or is that going to be a special call to make sure that whoever is operating the sensitive uses, either a school or so on, will pay attention to it? Because I'm not sure if that yellow card necessarily go to the person who would be a decision maker.
Right, yeah, that hasn't been detailed yet.
So I, I could speak to that a little bit. So for the 1,000 noticed, 1,000-foot noticing requirement, that usually goes out, like, you know, 10 days or so before the project. So people who get notified, it goes to the, the property owner that we have on file through the county data. They get it a little more last minute, and it's just a notice that this meeting is happening. Whereas with this, if we were to implement routing, well, we will implement routing within 1,000 feet for these sensitive land uses, it wouldn't be a notice, but early on in the beginning of the project, when we receive the application, we will share a copy of the application directly with these uses, and then we can have conversations with them. So it's, it's definitely, they're, they're not going to miss it. And also, it allows for earlier conversations, so that we can work with them to, you know, make revisions to the project or have conditions of approval from the beginning of the project. So that's the difference.
Okay, thank you. I think that's a lot clearer. I think that will definitely be very helpful, again, to the sensitive receptors. I think that would be, in my opinion, better than having any codified, by, you know, kind of distance by default. So this would be better. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you, Commissioner Kang. And thank you also, Lieutenant. Any other comments?
Yeah, just one comment. We have about 18 gas stations, out of which four have liquor licenses right now, and one is, one, I think, is approved, that may come up later. Out of the rest remaining 13, if all of them apply, do we need so many liquor licenses in Milpitas in a small city? And on top of that, someone comes up with a new license for, for a liquor store, do we need some new licenses, or are we thinking that the city needs some new licenses? What has been your take on this?
Yeah, thank you for that question. So they would be welcome to apply. Depending on the property, it might be an over-concentrated, over-concentrated area, because it would be considered an off-site license. I can't really say whether or not we would support the application, but, yeah, technically, they would still be able to apply.
So Commissioners, if this is, the presentation is acceptable, because if we want to do an ordinance, we would have to take a vote to, to make some changes. But right now, we could just basically accept the presentation. Now, each case that they bring to us and present to us, we can always put per case basis our requirements, if we see where it, what neighborhood it is located. So it all depends. Yeah, per case, yes.
And I can summarize what we will do, and if that seems acceptable, then, you know, then we don't, I guess we don't need to consider an ordinance, but after what I summarize, if there's more desire, then, then we can discuss that. So the way I would summarize it, summarize it is, we would route projects within 1,000 feet of sensitive uses from the beginning, when we receive the application. So that's something that we can definitely do internally without an ordinance. Secondly, and I, I would say in our analysis, we can provide crime data and in our presentation, so that the planning commission can see that and propose additional conditions of approval if necessary. So that would be one other, I guess, change and implementation item. And then, yeah, I, I think those are the two that I saw, unless I missed any, if those work.
Yeah.
Oh, yes, and as a, just a matter of standard conditions, we also will think of some standard condition of approval, based off of what we've seen from other jurisdictions, and just have those apply for projects where applicable. So we will do that. That will be more automatic, and then, yeah, the additional conditions can also be added on a case-by-case basis.
Oh, perfect, perfect.
I have a question. Do we charge any money for, as, as a city, do we charge any money for liquor license?
We charge for the conditional use permit and the minor conditional use permit.
Most of the cities, like San Jose, they charge about $700 from every liquor license. That's the city charges. So if you can, this will be a revenue for the city. If we can think of charging some money, a lot of cities, they do that. That's a city license, that's besides the business tax. So $756 San Jose charges per applicant, whether it's a gas station or a liquor store or any other place, grocery store. So we could also think of something like that, maybe in the future, so that it adds revenue to the city. Just a suggestion.
Yeah, and I'm not sure what fee that is, but it, it may not be a planning fee, but for our planning entitlements, we do collect more than $700. But the fee that you might be referring to might be something else. We could at least look into it and see what that is.
Yes, the fee I am, the fee I am referring to is just like we have a business license, the same license, it's an alcohol license. So San Jose charges for that, I'm sure about that. Another city, one or two, I know they charge. So if we can charge it to existing owners also, something at least to bring up the revenue, that would be greater, they don't mind paying.
Commissioner Awastie, if I may, just because I have some familiarity with it, as I used to work in the city of San Jose. So what they have is an off-sale, off-sale of alcohol permit program, and it's designed to fund the costs of enforcement for annualized inspections, to look at compliance with certain conditions and terms and things like that. So it's not necessarily a revenue generating program, or intended as a revenue generating program in the forefront. It is one that, as part of their overall regulatory scheme that they have adopted, and then pay, and then offsetting the costs of those enforcement, those inspections. So that's a very generalized and simplified program that they have adopted. That's, it's not a land use regulation, so not necessarily something before this body. It's a different kind of regulation adopted by the state council.
So if we can also, so it, it means that whatever they are charging the money for, for enforcement and all, if right now we do some enforcement with the police, the police goes and everybody goes. So it's the taxpayers' money which is going. So might as well the business owner, if they were willing to pay, we have an ordinance, let them pay for it, because we are enforcing if there is any problem at the gas station, or if there is a sting operation, and we want to see somebody is doing something wrong. So that, that enforcement will be paid for, instead of being paid for, for by you, me, or anybody else from the city, as, as a taxpayer.
To the extent it's helpful to, in Milpitas, we do have grant programs through the, through ABC to do undercover enforcement and to, and those kinds of sting operations that you were talking about. And that's something that we do work, already work in conjunction with the ABC on.
All right, with that said and summarized by Director Jay here, I guess we shall move on to our next agenda.
If, if no members of the council have a, have a motion, the discussion, and there's no more discussion, then the, the item is concluded.
There's no more, yeah, okay. So our next agenda item would be our adjournment. Right? But before that, I'd like to thank Mr. Randy here, Baez. Lieutenant, thank you, and especially also the staff who put this together. I, I remember we had requested for this, and we really appreciate all the time and effort, which is very informative, and it helps, it helps so much. Thank you so much, yes. So do we have a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
I'll second that.
Vice Chair, and second by Commissioner Calkins. All right, the meeting is adjourned? Yes. Oh, vote, vote, vote. It's New Year. Yes, vote, vote, yes.
Commissioner Kang?
Aye.
Commissioner Calkins?
Aye.
Commissioner Gupta?
Aye.
Commissioner Awastie?
Aye.
Commissioner Galan?
Aye.
Vice Chair Medina Ashby?
Aye.
And Chair Albona?
I vote aye.
Thank you.
Okay, now it's adjourned. Meeting adjourned. In a hurry all the time, we go.